Where did my task go?
(laughing) It's going on.
Good evening, everyone. Well, welcome to our February, what is it, okay, February 8th, regular board meeting. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the states of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call of trustees, all trustees are present, Mr. Johnson is joining us virtually tonight. So I'd like to call this regular board meeting to order, please. Um, can we start with any good of the order board discussion? If anyone has any comments? Okay, then we'll move right down to our first agenda item and that's our discussion on policy 0000, which is the educational philosophy policy and Mr. McCrea has agreed to facilitate this part. Thank you.
What I just realized is that I am sharing my screen and Rob, can you see my screen?
I absolutely can.
I think you're the only one because no one else in the board can.
Oh, you have the side by sides there, right? I think you're on the, on the, uh, remote there where you can control everything. You should be able to control what's on the other screen.
Yep, that happens. Nope. That's all right, I can, I can read off the slideshow, I apologize. Everyone else can see it though, so I. All right, so today we're going to talk about, um, the vision and philosophy. So there's a couple of things we have to go over first. One is that we were going to talk about educational philosophy 0000. As we were going through this, um, something came up that I realized. Educational philosophy 0000 was adopted in 2003 and it hasn't been revised or revisited since then. Policy 010, 0210, goal for instructional program, which has your mission statement in it, was adopted in 2003. NISBA has an updated policy, policy 0000, which is the new NISBA policy from the policy manual, which is the mission statement and vision together. So what that has done is that's taken the old educational philosophy, compiled it with instead of learning outcomes, made it a vision statement, and utilized the district's mission statement. So I talked to Rachel about this when I realized all this was going on. One of the bigger goals that we have to do is instead of revamping the educational philosophy goal, it really is revamping policy 0000 to combine policy 210 along with that for the new NISBA standards. So that is again, taking the mission and visions and putting it all together in one piece of policy. The policy committee is going to work together with the board and the school community to revise and develop a vision statement that encompasses the values of the board and the whole school community. With us in order to do that, we really need to start having a conversation about the board's philosophy and vision. So 2003 has changed a little bit. And, you know, we haven't, as a board, you haven't all come together and discussed your own visions and philosophies. And in order for them to be able to all be comprehensive and put into a statement that we can bring up to the community and also get stakeholder input, we first need to start with ours. So tonight's just a conversation about building those, understanding each person's non-negotiables, each person's belief, each person's beliefs and goals towards the district. It's the first, it's just an introductory kind of thing that we're going to build and follow through on. Any questions, comments? I really wish I could read this and I apologize, I'm going to read, realize this to you. So the purpose of tonight, we discussed that, um, we're going to use this as a foundation. So what is a vision? A vision is the board's articulation of a destination for which the district should aim. A future that in important ways is better, more successful, or more desirable for the district than is the present. Vision is future focused and seeks to shape events rather than simply let them happen. The vision should give a clear, concise picture of what an ideal education looks like in the district, taken right from NISBA policy, right from that to be able to guide what it is. A vision statement should include, but not limited to, cultivation of civic minded individuals, balance of program and finance, high standards of academic conduct for all ability levels, the district to be a center of innovation and creativity, development of a sense of spirit and pride for all stakeholders. Those are just some examples of what a vision can be. Really is what the community really strives for, and what I mean by community is the board, the students, the staff, all the community members that are in board. Any questions so far? Tonight, the agenda, we're going to have our ground rules, which I'll show you in a moment, and icebreaker, and then we're going to talk about key beliefs, key beliefs and non-negotiables. I'm going to give you some homework and then we'll be done. So roughly forty-five minutes, forty to forty minutes. So first and foremost, if you wouldn't mind, please take out the ground rule statements. Two-sided. I like the Don Miguel Ruiz, nineteen ninety-seven, the four agreements. I'll give you all a minute to read them both. Rob, I apologize. I didn't, I didn't get you the, the handouts. Oh, that's just a seven to you.
Just, just fine.
Before I start any discussion or group work, I usually like to hand out these ground rules. I've used them throughout the years. So first I'd like to ask you to take out the personal style compass points. Rachel said that this has been done before at a NISBA training. I don't know if you've all seen this before. Some of you have, Rob says yes.
I have, yeah.
So each personal style really describes who you are, which one relates directly to you. So there's four. Typically, I would have these up in a room and we'd walk to them. But unfortunately, that's not going to happen. You have your whiteboards in front of you. What I'm going to ask you to do is I'm going to ask you to look at each one of these compass points, find out which one of these best really aligns to who you are. We're not going to be doing northwest or northeast, we're really coming to, sorry. Which one aligns directly to you, if you could, after you look through those, just write it on your whiteboard and flip it over. And while you're doing that, think about what are the strengths of your style. Rob, do you have a piece of paper? Um, north is acting, it's let's do it, act, try, think, and plunges in. West is planning, attend to detail, structure, the who, what, when, where, and how, why and how. East is speculating, looks at the big picture and the possibilities. And south is caring, likes to know that everyone's feelings have been taken into consideration, that their voices have been heard.
Got it.
So as you're looking, you gotta think about the strengths of your style, what the limitations of your style are. Strengths of your style and limitations of your style. We're all ready, yep. All you have to do is break down what compass point you think you are, north, east, south, or west. And I'm going to stay out of it. We're taking one here. Yep, just take one.
And then you said what, what, like list out pros and cons for, for it?
We're just asking you to think about it because we don't have a ton of time to really discuss and go over these. So I want you to think, because I am going to ask you question number three, which is what style do you find most difficult to work with and why? But I want you to think about your limitations and your, and what you feel are your strengths and what limitations your styles are.
But that's good, you can always use yours.
You can, you can always. Okay, if we're ready, is everybody ready to share? Yeah, oh, thank you.
Sure.
Will you do one of these or all? Just pick one, you gotta pick the one that most relates to you. If we had more time to really dig into this and go through it, I would ask you to look at each five of these questions, really go through it. Each of you has a board member, but that would take us probably the next half an hour. Okay. Who would like to, everybody want to go one time or you want to share individually?
Doesn't matter to me.
All right. Right. That was kind of the idea, so that way when we're having these conversations, you each know where each person's coming from and what their personal styles are. So when we're talking about our values and beliefs, it helps connect it a little bit together. So Cindy, would you like to go first? And we'll go right around the room to, uh, to Tim and then Argy and then Trish and so forth.
So originally I was going to write north because that's how I am at work, that's how I am at home, that's how I am everywhere, I'm like, let's get it done yesterday. However, I think as my role as a board president, I tend to go more south to make sure everybody's voices are heard, um, that it's an equal sharing of this board negotiation. So when we're talking tonight and the board, I would say, Tom.
Thank you. Tim, I am north. I very much, uh, am a decision maker. I am committed to action, getting things done. One of the limitations of this style is that I can become impatient. Um, and I, I recognize that. I sometimes fail to see other options because I've focused on the plan I had that I've come upon rather quickly. And, uh, as far as what styles do you find most difficult to work with, it's probably south. Because at some point, I just say, your feelings have to be put to the side, let's go get this thing done. And, uh, that's, that somehow is, uh, a problem for me, I suppose. Um, what are the, I don't know how to answer number four. Uh, number five is, uh, what do you value about other people's styles? And because I think other people are more open-minded, more patient, more willing to take their time, uh, sometimes, uh, more steady. Uh, I appreciate that. And, uh, uh, but I do recognize that I am what I am, that's the way it's going to be.
Thank you, Tim. Argy?
All right, I'm another north person, um, in terms of strength. And I'll say, you know, why, I, I make decisions all day long, you know, thinking about what's the, what my role is. Um, so, you know, it's not something I'm hesitant to do. And I would say I'm not afraid to be wrong, you know, which a lot of times, you know, you can make a decision and it didn't turn out the best, but at least you moved forward and, you know, now you can go back and come up with a new one. And I, and I think it aligns with a goal of continuous improvement, which is something that I believe. Um, limitations, be prone to rely too much on your gut, you know, and can make a snap decision, clean out the slate. Um, and a north person may not hold time forward to be heard, um, because we're trying to move forward quickly. As far as the other questions, style most difficult to work with is south, this is the same way you've said. I try to not be a stealing person. And four, I don't remember how to answer either. Um, what do I value about the other three styles? I think we need a little bit of all of them to come out with a good product and a good decision. You know, depending on what the issue is, you know, you may need to take more time and make sure you hurt some stakeholders before you make decisions. Speaking of all of them, which I think we probably have in this room every time we're done.
Say it again, Trish?
Uh, I didn't feel strongly about any of the four. I felt like it's all four of them could be in some way, but I was, I was east. For my role on the board and seeing the big picture. I think as a board member, that's, you know, I'm not the expert and I do need to be sure people, I'm not aware of everything involved here in, because I just didn't like to see it. So what I see just too much, a little low. So I feel one of the limitations of being a big picture for this is that I don't really know the whole picture, if you will. Um, but that's why I do like to do what I want to say, because I'm kind of understanding my own ideas to offer that I wouldn't be aware of my own, you know, because my own is so delicate. And my own biases, you know, you kind of live the educational system to your children, your family or your friends' children, or, um, because then you're not aware of what everyone's experience.
Thank you, Trish. Rob?
And I'm you. Um, so I'm, I'm more of a, uh, can you see that? Nope, probably not. I'm trying to hold up paper, but my background, no, so east. Uh, uh, for me, um, very, uh, so strategic planning. Um, there's a running joke at work that my favorite word is optionality, right? Like I like understanding and exploring, um, the options, uh, in the, uh, and, and looking at the long-term, um, sort of possibilities. I, I find, uh, you know, like, uh, Tim and Argy, I find south to be the most difficult to work with. Um, if you know me well, my personality, I'm very much a, a facts and data guy, right? Like, you know, everybody's entitled to their own opinions, they're not entitled to their own facts. And that's, um, you know, sort of, sort of live, live by that. Um, so, so as such, I, you know, I sometimes get myself in trouble by having, uh, you know, south be, be difficult to work with. Um, not trying to be callous is just part of my personality. Um, what are, what are the other ones here? Hang on, I did get the email just now. Um, the, the limitations are, are, you know, I think largely around execution. I think east pairs very well with north. Um, you know, it's, it's, uh, good to have a, a big idea person, uh, with an execution person, you know, marching right along in lockstep. And what do people from other directions or styles need to know? I think I went over that a little bit. Um, and what do I value about the other styles? Uh, as much as, you know, south is a style I find difficult to work with, I value a lot, um, about the beliefs of people who are, um, you know, sort of that southward facing. Um, I sort of wish I could do it, I guess, and, 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 you know, I think it provides a good, well-roundedness, um, you know, to a team having that slot filled. So, anyway, that's, that's me.
Thank you, Rob. Rachel?
Um, we did this exercise during the board training that was, oh boy, almost two years ago. And I found myself in the same place almost two years later, that I feel like I fit in any of these categories and probably any awards that are not listed on the four points of the compass. Um, and I do very much respect the, the south for its need to bring people together and to understand the different voices that are a part of it. I think it's very important to look at the whole big picture. Uh, but it's also very important to plan out what needs to happen and when and why. And then it's also super important, obviously, to implement it. So I, I feel like I stand in the middle of the room and I remember joining a group because there was the fewest number of people in that group. And, and because we did it with the four, four, four sides of the room. But I, I think that for each of us in our different lives, we, we end up playing different roles. And sometimes you have to be the best guy or, and sometimes, sorry, that was a joke. But other times, you know, you need to look at the big picture and think long-term, think, um, think broader, you know, think beyond the smaller communities to larger communities. So I, I have all of the limitations, maybe I have all the strengths, I still like to accept. And I, I do value people who are uniquely more one or another because I think that people do have certain strengths in one area. I just don't see that I can categorize myself as one of them.
Good, thank you. Jim?
You know, all four of these are, are of interest and, and that's for sure. Uh, my south, uh, the west here, the planning and structure kind of thing. You know, I, I like to, I like to be into something that's going on, okay? And, you know, I'm, I'm not comfortable when things are laying around and where it takes all kinds of money and, uh, all, all kinds of time and things of that nature. I like to see things get done and, you know, and, and have a situation where, you know, individuals can all fit into that, into that structure to make things happen. And, uh, and you've got to have an interest in, in, in what you're doing, you know, and come to the table, do the work, and work with people. And that's the, that's the biggest thing right there.
Thank you. So now that everybody has an understanding of where each person is strong and their beliefs a little bit, now we're going to move right into the nitty-gritty. So what I'm going to ask you to do, as I was going to ask for the whiteboard and I just realized I didn't give you something to wipe the whiteboard off with. Oh, I do have tissues that'll hang out. Using your whiteboard, I want you to write down one, only one, your number one passion or goal that you have for our district. So as a board member, as a key communicator, as a community member, the number one passion, the number one feeling that you have for our district. I'm not going to ask a lot, we're not going to, it's, we just want to know what it is that you feel is the number one thing that you want. I have like four number ones, but.
Yeah, thanks.
But you, you have to prioritize your number one. You're welcome. I, yeah, yeah, all right.
I promise.
Just give me that again, please.
Okay, so what you want to do is write down your number one passion, belief, goal, feeling that you have as a board member, community member, parent of a child that comes into this meeting, all encompassing of what you have for our district, the number one feeling or goal you have. Each person should probably be a little bit different than the others, or they might not be the same. And again, I would typically do a pair share where I put you together, the people talk to each other and then you report out as a group, but. Kind of, kind of hard, yeah, and also with COVID, it's a little bit difficult to get people to pair share. So I, Jess is going to be our, our note taker on this. So she's actually going to write down each person's statement. So we have those as we look back together at the policy and as we put our vision together as a group. This will help the formation of that. So Trish? We're going to have you go first, we're gonna. Oh, you know what, Rob, you're right there, you're first actually, I'll save Trish a minute.
Did you say me? I'm first?
Yeah.
I'm still, I'm still thinking, I'm still thinking.
All right, Trish says you go first.
I need to hear like three other ones before I finalize mine.
That's how it works, that's how it works.
Yeah, that's right, I need to, I need to develop the strategy, uh, let a couple of executors get theirs.
I said the ability to engage and challenge everyone to be their best and feel some belonging or being included.
Great, thank you. Well, she, she merged them together.
I said support each student's ability to thrive in school and beyond. I feel like I can show it to you.
Your turn, Tim.
Oh, uh, work to get things done.
Good.
Thank you. Would everybody like to go next?
Mine's similar to Rachel and Trish's, so I said educate and develop students to be their best selves.
Mine goes similar to that too, that all kids are given excellent, top-rated educational opportunities regardless of race, financial abilities, gender, et cetera, et cetera. The first thing.
I would agree with all that, I got probably a little more specific. I wrote 100% graduation rate of well-prepared students.
So I hope that you all realize this. Oh, Rob, he's, sorry, he kind of looks like he's been before. Go ahead, Rob.
Huh?
What's yours?
No, I wasn't trying.
We're all done, we're waiting on you.
Uh, um, it, I, 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 I want to say I was going to go with basically Tim's, but, um, there's a different way I'd like to word it and I, I, I don't know.
Ninety-nine percent?
No, just that, and not to, like, be, be honest with you, that's the first one my head reaches for, but I, I feel like there's got to be more to it than that. So I, I'm, I'm digging deep for some more nuance and I'm not happy with whatever I'm coming up with.
I think I heard the nuance in, in some other people's about development and meeting their social and emotional needs. And that's, when I say well-prepared students, they defined that better than I did.
So when we're looking and as you realize, I think you all had almost the same idea, but not, and you, you developed a nice well-rounded aspect of it. But if you look at each of your statements, there were things that were missing from it, right? Each statement, you said a well sense of belonging, but what is a sense of belonging? And how does that sense of belonging relate to the student of socioeconomic standards? Or a student of race, or a student with disability? Same with academic standards, when you have somebody that's going, what does 100% graduation rate look like? Is it advanced, all students with advanced, is it CTE? And when you're developing a mission, a vision statement, those are the key components that you want to look at. You want to look at your vision statement as a whole and then all of the other layers that are underneath it pulling it back. Um, do we have technology for our students? And what does that look like if our students are going beyond school districts? So as you start thinking about the vision in your statements, thinking about all those other layers will help us build our vision statement. The NISBA policy has about seven examples of vision statements. And I brought other districts that have more, and they are layered. And I'll show that with, the policy committee will share it out. I didn't want to skew anybody's, you know, ideals tonight or ideas. But each one, as you think about it, I can, I can see your, your thought process going as you look at your statement of what other layers could you put in to what you now see as for our students and what you have for this district. And you can start to see how it becomes one thing to many. So now I'm going to ask you, these are the non-negotiables. These are the things that I want you to think about that are must haves for our students. They can be like one-word statements, they can be two, three, four-word statements, you have post-it pads in front of you. The non-negotiables are your key words or phrases that come to your mind that this is it. These are my must haves for kids. Kids must have this. Teachers must have this. Our district.
And this is like completely broad, like anything and everything sort of a thing?
Anything and everything. This can run from technology to professional development to our facilities, to red lockers or purple lockers instead of blue lockers. Whatever it is, these are the things that you hold as your key non-negotiables, things that you will not alter, that you believe each child in each district should strive for or have. I'm going to give you five to seven minutes. And what we're going to do on these is when you're done, and again, I had this all by the way on my PowerPoint, I apologize.
And how, how many are you looking for?
I'm looking for, you have about ten post-it notes, I'm looking for one to ten. Whatever you feel comfortable in giving is what I'm looking. Whatever you feel comfortable in giving is what I'm looking for. Don't mark your name on them. You don't have to mark your name because as a board, this is our board's non-negotiables.
This is going to work a little differently then, and I was going to say, I have exactly zero post-it notes over here, but, uh, but I do have a large piece of paper.
Yeah, you're going to have to send them to me, Rob.
If you want to text them to Rob, I'll write them on your list, which I do.
Or you can actually just send them to Jess and we'll organize them. So what I'm going to ask you to do is three board members over here have a board behind them. I'm just going to ask you when you're finished to put your post-it notes on that board. And three board members over here have a board, I'd like you to post your post-it notes on that board. Typically, what I like to do is a gallery walk where you get to look at them and see each people, each person's viewpoints. Um, I am then going to organize them over the next two weeks, put them together for all of you and then share them back out at our meeting and prior to that, so you and everyone can do those together as a group. Any questions?
Actually, to me again.
Yep, like what you want for the district.
The things that you want, that have.
For the district.
The district has to have, so things that, you've been here for 30 years, Jim, so you have things that you know you have and you've done that you believe are the right things, you put those down. The things that you want to see that haven't been done there yet or the things that must be here for every kid, put that down. Rob's texting me again, I'm going to pull. Alright, perfect, I'll write it, Rob. Thank you. Yep, anywhere you want. That way during the meeting, if you'd like to look, or afterwards, before you leave, you can also look at the gallery walk and take a look at whatever board member is thinking. And then I will also combine all these together. I will also try to put them in a building, nice organizational structure. I'm going to give three more minutes.
So is that Rob?
Yep.
So we got Rob's and mine's there.
She has more, I'll write more.
I did it right up here, Jess.
Yes, yep, that's how I figured, that way we're not crossing across the room. We're going to give it one more minute? No, Jim's going to stay in there. Joe's going to come in here. No, Rob, please, Rob.
Right, Rachel? Do, 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 10 seconds.
She got 20.
You okay?
Yes, I can't see, they're.
I know, yeah, tend to do that, babe.
So typically now what I would do is have a carousel walk, have each person look at it as a group, talk about what you see, see if you can put it into categories, as Tim was talking about the other day. Basically, there's five kind of pillars that we'd be able to sit this into, as Tim was talking about. Um, but I wanted to be able to show you guys all of your thought processes and I'll put those together with the policy committee and we'll start looking at those as a group, so that way we're going to share those all out again. As we start to look at our vision statements, you're going to see, as each board member, since we haven't had this discussion yet, you're going to start to see what your core values are and what your beliefs are as a group. And we hope we can then build upon this conversation another time. But I do have one more homework assignment though for you. I do apologize giving the third homework, but it's kind of fun. Sorry, it's like, it's actually kind of fun for me. So what I'd like you to do is I'm going to send you a link, or you could just send me an email. I want you to think about what a graduate of Voorheesville School District will look like either five or 10 years from now. What should our student be, a vision of a graduate? Because this is something we're going to start working on as a district, with our staff and our, and in our community. What does a graduate look like of Voorheesville School District? Because if we're working on a vision statement, we should know what the vision of a student looks like 10 years from now. Now, graduate 10 years from now, just so you guys know, is, is my daughter Pia. She will actually probably be graduating here 10 years from now. And when I think about for a student what that is going to look like, I ask myself that question. What is my daughter going to have an understanding of when she graduates? I don't really know that answer. I have beliefs or wishes or wants, but I, I don't have an articulated vision of what our students are going to look like. And, and I know it's a, it's a very interesting concept, if you really think about what it looks like when you graduated high school, or if you have children that graduated high school, what they look like when they graduated? And now look at today's graduates, what they look like. Think about 10 years down the road, because that's what this vision, when we're doing it, that's what you're actually doing. You're taking all the best parts of what we have now and then thinking for the future of what we want.
When do you want that done?
So I would like it by February 21st. And I'll send you guys this, since you don't have it, I'll send you the expectations again tomorrow so you'll, you'll have the, the homework assignment. And I'll give you specific things that you can think about as well. Um, has anyone ever thought about that in the kind of this framework, what our students will look like?
Even what one student would look like or what the student's?
Great question. So we're not only here for one student, correct?
Right.
That's the question that I do.
You're saying eight students and I'm thinking, there's a.
That, I'm glad you picked up on that, I did that for a reason. So there are, let's say there are 100 students graduating each year. Each student could be different, but what are the overall arching concepts that that student is going to look like as they graduate? If there are students who have special needs, what does that child look like? Because they're going to have very specific standards that are exactly the same as a student with high expectations, right? If we have a high-performing student and a student with disabilities, there's a lot of those things that are exactly the same. Right? High expectations across the board for those students, civic mindedness, social awareness. Any of those things that we're going to look like for our kids, those are what I want you to think about for the, for that. Any other questions?
21st and I'll send them.
21st and I'll send it to you. Everybody got the homework assignment? I hope this was helpful. And.
Yep, I'll go.
Alright, so now we're going to go on to Joseph Yenza, who I probably can hear me and is honestly walking his way down here right now.
Yes, that will be our next agenda, thank you, Frank.
You're welcome.
And when, um, Mr. Yenza arrives, we will go into the next agenda earlier.
Can you, before, can you say that, Frank, will you circulate, I'm on policy, can you off the, will you circulate to everybody?
Yes. Yes, so my plan actually, I think you already, my plan is to actually take all these, try to put them in pillars of where they all will fit in and I'll circulate with you.
Yeah.
And then also, when you're sending me your vision of a graduate, I'm going to take all seven of your visions, put them together in one group, but I'm going to take key components of them and create a one-page document, so you can understand what a comprehensive student with all seven of your visions look like.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so I was going to say that RJ and Rob, this is.
That's cool.
Our next big push on the committee is to be working on policy 0000, to bring something together that we can draft and bring back to this team, um, of us, so. So just seeing how, yeah, yeah. Um, it's going to be fun.
Hi, Joe.
Hi, Joe.
Hello.
Some English.
Let's put it over in Rob's chair.
Okay, so our next presentation will be high-risk athletic presentation by our athletic director, Mr. Joseph Yenza, Joe, thanks for coming and updating us.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks for coming.
So you've all heard the news that on February 22nd, the governor announced that interscholastic high-risk sports in all regions may begin practicing on February 1st. Um, that's the date that, that the governor, um, that the governor, uh, allowed for high-risk activities to begin. Following that announcement, more than a dozen counties in the capital region of our country, Moloch Valley, that consulted with subject matter experts, local health departments, healthcare providers, and healthcare facilities to unify their approach and allow high-risk interscholactic activities to resume. What this means for individual districts, for us to resume, we need our, we, we need our district needs to meet minimum sports-specific, um, requirements and must have met Albany County, um, COVID-19 metrics. So essentially, um, the governor turned, it turned the, uh, final approval over to counties. And within our section, a group of counties formed essentially in any consortium. They collaborated and came up with a more uniform, uh, plan between counties, which for our purposes, that's, that's pretty beneficial and it, it actually made things a little easier. One requirement is that the Board of Education needs to approve each individual high-risk sport. The, the sports we're seeking approval for at this time are basketball, winter cheer, ice hockey and volleyball. Another requirement is each district must have, must have sports-specific preparedness plan approved by its school medical director. Uh, our plan has been submitted and has been given approval by Dr. Solomon, our medical director, as a, that approval came on Thursday last week. So as you could see, we have pretty quick turnaround time to put things in place in the correct preparation to be implemented. The metrics that we, that need to be met are as follows. The seven-day rolling average percent positivity rate in the county must be at or below 4%. If the positivity rate is above 4%, then activities must be restricted to individual or distance group training. And the hospital capacity, um, the region's hospital capacity rate, um, must be above 15%. So the rolling average is a county, um, metric and the hospitalization rate is a region metric, so it's capital region. As a district, we, we will, we'll monitor these metrics, um, using the COVID-19 regional metrics dashboard, specifically Mr. McCray and I will monitor the metrics. We, our county hit 3.9% on Saturday and it's stayed, it's stayed at 3.9% since Saturday. I, I also understand that the county health department had a meeting today to seek further clarification, uh, on the regi, on the regions or, yeah, the region's hospital capacity rate. That may actually not be part of this tomorrow. Um, the person that I spoke to felt there's a lot of confusion on the, on the, because one's county and one's region, there was a meeting this afternoon at 2:30 to nail down those details, but they seem to think that may not be included moving forward. I want to talk a little bit about our preparedness plan, which as I said, it has been approved by our medical director. Our, our plan, uh, which I believe you all had, is our, that's our Voorheesville specific plan. The col, the colonists of council have a plan, section two hasn't adopted some protocol since the fall. It still has guidance document. The one specific section two, is, the one specific section two, um, policy, I'll call it, um, that's different from the, from the fall is the clarification on, on use of face masks. Um, they, they are required in the fall, I want to say it's just said, required unless it could not be tolerated. So there was a nuance there, you know, that, you know, made it confusing for people. So, so that's clarified, it's concrete. To, to have an exemption from wearing a mask, an individual needs to provide documentation from their healthcare provider that there's a medical condition, um, that, um, precludes them from wearing the mask. You know, talking with, and talking with our, our league schools, there, there's no students at this time in any, any league that have provided that documentation during the school day. So I don't anticipate that being a problem moving forward.
Uh, quick question, Joe, does that, I, I, the, does, um, if a student submits that, does that have to get reviewed by our school physician as well, or is it just accepted?
Yeah, no, it's not just accepted, it goes to our medical director as well. He then has a conversation with their medical director to see the validity of the note.
Cool.
Uh, so, so, you know, I thought that, that was a big difference from the fall. And, you know, basically, for, for the schools that play, um, fall sports, especially soccer, um, the suburban council and the patrune council were, were two sports that did soccer in the fall. And the feedback that I got from other athletic directors is, is that the student athletes transitioned pretty quick to, and became accustomed to the masks and it really wasn't an issue.
That's during competition?
During competition, during practice, basically the whole time you're on the facility, coaches, officials, everyone in the building associated with the event is going to wear a face covering. I won't go into too much detail about, um, the sports specific thing, but for community folks that may be listening, our plan outlines everything that is going to happen upon pulling into the parking lot to, to the facility, very much like our school reopening plan. Some of the pieces were actually. Some of the pieces were actually taken out of our reopening plan, some of the pieces were taken out of the NISFA reopening document. Where to enter the building, how to enter the building, where to put your belongings, how to exit the building. For, for an athletic event, um, the same type of detail is, is, is in the plan on how contests will be run. Several traditional elements to a contest have been eliminated. For example, the, after basketball games, people line up and they cross each other and shake hands. All of that's going to be eliminated, no high-fiving, shaking hands, fist bumping, um, all of those things are covered. Some things not referenced in the plan that I wanted to touch on, one contact tracing as a district. We've been contact tracing six, since September. It's something that, that personally I've very, been very involved in, in my role as COVID coordinator, I'm familiar with contact tracing and, you know, basically between phone calls and emails, I have daily contact with Albany County Department of Health. Very, very responsive, very helpful, um, usually answer the phone every time you call, um, which is very positive for us. For contact tracing of practices, I'm having the coaches take attendance and they're going to email me the attendance daily. I'm, I'm going to print their attendance and I'm going to file it with the date, they're, they're, very similar to how I did it, um, in the fall. For contact tracing of contests, we will, we'll use the same format that we did in the fall. Colonial council has a shared sheet where we input the players and coaches that are going to be attending that contest. It's got to be done by a certain time, maybe it's got to be done twenty-four hours in advance of the contest so that we have a chance to review it, ask any questions, if we have any questions, um, you know, we're, we, we're very diligent with each other in the fall, we'll see if we change. You know, a person wasn't going to be at the event, um, we took them off, a person was going to be added, we added it. And I just, you know, I just kept all of those documents for the period of time that I needed to keep it. At this point in time, spectators are not permitted, so the contact tracing will actually be easier than the fall, than the fall. When we're outdoors, we allow two, um, spectators per, per athlete. We're going to start the season, probably end the season with no spectators, with the exception of, we are going to try and coordinate a, a senior game. We did that successfully in the fall for swimming, where we will have the senior parents, be able to attend one contest, uh, senior cheer and, and basketball parents. Volleyball, um, hockey will do something as well. We, we're, hopefully, um, tomorrow, we're going to mount a camera. It's called a huddle focus camera, it'll give us the ability to livestream events in the gym. Sports officials, game assignments are, are all listed in an online assigning, assigning program, so we have the contact tracing game. I will add the official's name, contact information to the list, so I'll have a complete list of everybody that was in the gym. The home school is responsible for the tracing at their event and reporting back to the visiting school. So the actual contact tracing works very much like, like it does during the school day. We, we, I don't want to say we do it, but we provide the information to the Department of Health and then they take it from there. So we'll, we'll follow the same format that we've been following since September. Any person that enters the venue will require a health screening. We will have random COVID-19 testing for high-risk sports student athletes.
Joe, can I say something?
Yes.
So the waiver, so another component that all parents have to do is, not only do we have to have board approval, not only do we have to have plans assigned by the medical director, not only do we have to have a confidential, um, telephone number, by the way, which we already have, have done, which wasn't required, we already have that, so we have to have a COVID hotline for this very specific purpose of high-risk sports, but since we already have one, we're already a step ahead, which is really good. The other aspect is a waiver that has to be signed by parents acknowledging consent of understanding what the, um, you know, what the issue is of them being able to play high-risk sports. They, you know, we have one, you have it, it's also there, it's been vetted by our attorneys as well. There can, there's a consent part of that waiver that basically states that a parent understands and a student understands that they will, in order to play, have to abide by any changes that happen. Because as you know, this is a very fluid, you know, COVID pandemic planning is not like it's done on Monday and it stays that way for the rest of the year. So things do change, so the consent waiver basically states that, you know, any, we understand that it has to be done and we'll follow the district's plan accordingly. So if we're going to be doing random testing, that's another aspect that parents have to understand is that, yes, they understand that their child might be tested, you know, randomly tested for COVID during the timeframe where they're playing higher-risk sports. The testing's going to go right along with our district planning already, we're roughly getting about twenty percent of our stu-, our student staff population per month. We're going to continue with that, we're just adding in our high-risk players into that mix, so we make sure we get a percentage of those students, which we don't have defined at this moment because we don't know the exact amount of students that we have playing until after tonight, and then we'll have a better understanding. They'll be put into it.
Do you think that this is going to, this is going to do something to the sports area, the, the sports arena from the standpoint of, of people coming and, and do, and playing?
I think we're going to have a lot of kids that are going to want to be a part of it. Absolutely, I think we have a lot of students who want to be a part of it in our community. They have been doing it already outside of our community, um, you know, as I believe, and I, I'll state it publicly, we've been, you know, pretty sound in our plan and working hard and creating a safe environment, and if we can create a safe environment with athletics, I think, you know, it's, it's our benefit and our, and our duty to make sure that we can keep kids safe in the proper way. Um, I do think they're going to do it, we've done, right now, we've done twenty percent testing for the past two weeks, we have zero positives through our surveillance testing, so, you know, we're getting anywhere between ten to sixteen people per day and zero of them have tested positive in the district. So it shows that it's not on campus, you know, it's not here, and I feel like if we continue to this, I think we can create a safe environment where we are going to have a large amount of our population trying out for these.
Do we have any idea as to the acceptance rate of other school districts within the conference?
Yeah, oh, you mean acceptance of how many kids are playing or?
No, of boards that would approve, uh.
As far as I know, there's not been one board that has denied it, okay.
Oh yeah, that's been in.
Joe, am I correct in saying that?
One, there was one board in our league that denied it and they're having an emergency meeting to reconsider. There was, you know, pretty substantial, um, community pressure, so I spoke with that athletic director, Ted, and there, he, there's a possibility they're going to convene an emergency session and talk about reconsidering these, the varsity level. There's probably, throughout our section, there's probably, I bet you there's twenty of these meetings going on tonight. Because like I said, turnaround time was, was very quick.
Do you have the same level of confidence in these other schools that you have in Voorheesville?
I, I do, um, and for two reasons. We, we put protocols in place in the fall and the things that we did in the fall. I didn't get any feedback of, you know, our student athletes going to another school and things were different, or things weren't in place. And the other, the other part of this, that, as part of this, they're, you're subject to audits by your local health departments. And according to, according to some of the things that I read, they're going to be conducting audits. Your approval will be rescinded by your community if you're not adhering to what you, what you say you're going to do, but my experience in the fall, and, you know, where we meet who was positive in the fall and we meet three to four times a week.
I got one more question, so if a student athlete on one of our teams tests positive, what happens?
Uh, the, the team, the coaches will be quarantined.
Well, it depends on the time that they test positive, if two days past the, the symptoms, so if they test positive on Wednesday, you go back two days and who they came in contact with will be quarantined, so not only will that student be, the team will be quarantined, but the district, most likely. The staff members that that student came in contact with, they would be quarantined, the other students that they were in class with, they will be quarantined, just as we would do now, it's exactly the same. It just extends out now to those other students on the team as well.
So for a period of time, there would be no competition?
Yes, yeah, and I think an important thing, Tim, building upon what you just asked was, say the district has to go remote, say we are remote for two weeks because of staffing or because we had quarantines, no contest can be played during the remote timeframe as well. So we are considered closed, I put, um, to the state, I have to notify them that we are, you know, even though we're remote, we're closed. So when we are remote, we are not having any contest or practices built in, any contests, excuse me.
So how, uh, what, what's the impact of either grade level or only building level closures on that, right? Right, like, so if it's nine through twelve are remote, does that mean that then triggers the, you know, competitions or?
Yeah, that's correct, if I do like grade nine remote, which, I don't know if you can really because of our, our staffing, how they're all interconnected.
Yeah, but.
Um, but yeah, if, if we were to do grade nine, it wouldn't count, if we do grade seven, it wouldn't count, but if we were to do grade nine through twelve, that would count as a full closure day.
Okay.
But if you're closing because of staffing?
Still remote, still closed.
Okay, that, thank you.
No, I asked that, same question. But if I'm closing due to staffing, chances are that's going to be six or seven staff members without campus and that's probably another forty to fifty students.
Yeah.
So there's a good chance of that.
So, Joe, you said, um, there's a great deal of interest, which I'm so certain there is, will there be tryouts and will we keep the numbers on teams the same as they have been?
We're, we're going to have, we're going to have caps. Initially, I was going to cap each team at twelve, um, may go to thirteen or fourteen, um, for, for a couple of reasons. And this is, this is more related to the condensed court seasons. We're, we're in a situation where now, um, we're given a green light to start February first, it's February eighth. So as a section, we, uh, we approved extending the winter season for two weeks. We pushed what's called the fall two season, moved from March first to March seventh. So now there's an overlap between the seasons, which is, which is traditional, um, and given, and given school year, if the team is going decent sectionals or makes it states, the seasons overlap, but because the pri-, practice requirements are less, we will have, we have the possibility of some, some students that are going to start a winter sport season and the sport they're playing in the winter, number one sport, they'll stay with it, but I think, you know, for this school year and the pandemic, we will have some students that have to decide between the sport in that week. And that one week is going to limit their eligibility for the first game because they won't get their practice through finals. So that's one of the reasons why we're, you know, we're looking at, um, possibility of going one or two of the twelve. You may start with thirteen kids, but you have a possibility that you'll end with eight or nine, so.
So what are, yeah, what are the practice, high-risk requirements, yeah?
Six.
If it wasn't that, then I don't know.
Six for non-contact, ten for contact.
Okay, okay.
And they also changed it so where, it used to be six days, so it was up to Saturday, they now allow you to practice on Sunday.
The waiver of a seven, they waived the seven-day, um, practice rule just for, well, so far it's just for the sport season. And, and a fall too. Not spring yet, but I assume that waiver will happen in the spring. I just, a couple of things on the schedules, our schedules are all league schedules, so we, we will have contests with, against neighboring counties, our league has five counties in the league, but we also can't play that contest if that county isn't at four percent or below. So if you think all, if you think all those, all those variables, you know, in, in the plan that you have in front of you, I think it, I think it said we tap, we'll be tapped basketball, I mean, that thirteen, take a week away, take all of the other variables that, you know, weather, um, you know, if you have to quarantine for some reason, realistically, it's going to be a four to ten, four to ten contest.
How much concern is there on the part of people like yourself running these programs and being able to, to, to get through, uh, the season where, where the whole thing has value?
That, that, that's a really good question and we talked a lot about that, you know, we're going to try and, we're going to try and if we can, a lot of factors have to fall into place, if we can have some type of league culminating event, um, to give the student, students, you know, something to be excited, something to look forward to, we're going to do that. My feeling, Jim, our student athletes are really, if, if they get the, my feeling is if you get to get your six practices in, and I schedule a senior game against a rival, they're going to find value in it, they, they need this and they want it.
And I, I, the first thing that totally impressed me about this is, um, I never lose vision that the senior class has had it so tough, they didn't have their junior prom last year, if they can get, some of the athletes get in here and get a senior recognition, I think that would be spot on, even if it's one game.
Yeah, and I think live streaming to the community is a great idea, I was actually going to ask if we could do something like that, I'm glad to be one of the thinking of it because there's a lot of community members who that, you know, seeing the kids they watch grow up, particularly in sports, so.
RC Swimming has done it with utilizing Facebook Live, so the parents, I'm a parent of a swimmer, you can actually watch your children participating in the event. And it's, and it's been great, the kids have enjoyed it, I can tell you as a parent and as an educator, the kid has thoroughly enjoyed being able to participate in these events. And as a parent, being able to watch your child, even if it's not even up close, you know, it's still, you know, it's still great.
I have a couple of questions, all right? You said if, if the rate goes above four percent, automatically everything in the county shuts down?
Yes.
So if someone tests positive, everything doesn't necessarily shut down, although the practicality is that team's going to have to quarantine for two weeks.
Practical thinking is they have to quarantine for two weeks.
Or two weeks, you know. So the only thing right now, the red light would be about four percent?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, when you were saying you're doing a contact tracing, which is lovely, the school has done such a good job of calling the phone waiting for the Department of Health, do you feel like if another team had a member tested positive, you think they'll call you and then you can call everyone in our
Yes.
community and be able to leave?
Absolutely.
Because I know the Department of Health can get really bogged down, not their fault.
We, we're going to follow the same procedures that we follow in this school.
I have one more question. This is one for Frank, how does this impact us at all using the gym space for classroom?
So I guess I, it's actually Joe and I and PJ Veramo, um, and it's fantastic. So we have, the, the high school gym has actually been utilized for PE and all those other purposes. Our middle school gym is utilized for, um, our choir and our band room. Our art custodian and maintenance staff are actually, there's a plan, we are tearing it down period nine, every day. They're tearing it down, we have a place to be able to put all that stuff, they're, they're getting it all ready, at the end of the night, they're going to sanitize and then the next morning, we have a group of people that are coming in in that morning and resetting it up. So we went over this morning, we spent probably half an hour this morning discussing it, there is, you know, yeah, there is a plan to be able to make this work. Well, I think everybody's in the same boat, is that, you know, it's, it's our, our music and drama students, it's our art kids, it's our athletic, if we can create an opportunity for these kids. If we can create an opportunity for these kids, even if it's a little bit harder for us to be able to get through it, in the end, it's about the kids. So they really are, and I gotta tell you, our custodian and maintenance staff have been fantastic about getting stuff done for our kids.
Hey, Juan, please continue to pass on our grab of the video.
Yeah, please. And then Joe ahead. So when you say, so just for the financial part, we haven't been paying officials and that's probably your biggest part of your budget, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that, that counts for so much. So even if we have to, like JB used to ride with Farcity Basketball and they'd stay for each other's games, even if we have to send two different buses, we're way ahead of the game budget wise.
Yeah, I, I, I've been in contact with the transportation department. I actually have a meeting with them tomorrow. Um, so we're gonna go over, over the roster, you know, estimate the roster numbers and how we're gonna coordinate it. Um, we staggered, we staggered the, the, uh, play dates um, within our league schedules to accommodate for that. So we won't have five different sports teams going at a day. Certain games are a certain day, certain teams play certain days of the week. Um, part of it, we, we did that for transportation. We also did that for sports officials. Um, many, many officials or organizations, um, have members that, you know, are not gonna issue it this season. So there, there's a lot of things that have been taken into consideration.
I have a question too. Indoor track was originally on the list. Did it fall off for the reason we talked about before, access to locations where the team?
Our, our indoor track coach, I asked him to submit a plan to me. Um, we're gonna do, we're gonna do a combination indoor track cross, cross-country, um, program, I'll call it, um, using the open gym format. So it's not gonna be technical practices, but they can accumulate practices. And as the weather gets better, um, I, there's some neighboring districts that, um, have gotten together and did some events within indoor track. Shawmont Mahonison threw shot and disc against each other. Um, and some other schools, um, clouded their tracks and did some virtual events similar to how we do swimming. Um, so we are gonna try and put together something, um, for indoor track, cross-country. Because cross-country, uh, the starting base, March seventh. Um, and a lot of those student athletes are, are the same. So we kinda wanna have a multipurpose plan, um, to get the cross-country runners in condition prior to March seventh. Because, yeah, shorten practice requirements, you know, six practices then meets. So we do, we do have a plan for indoor track, which is a little bit, it's a little bit of a combination of indoors using the commons and outdoors. Um, so it's gonna, you know, we're looking to start it when the weather gets a little better, basically.
Joe, I should know the answer to this, but where do we play hockey?
Uh, Schenectady Municipal Ice Rink is where our home games are.
That's a facility that you're gonna have to rely on them living up to our code.
Yeah, they, they have, they have, the five athletic directors in our merger, we met last week. Um, and we went over all of that and we, one of the A Ds that is a contact at the rink, he had all their, their protocols. They don't allow spectators in, they require face masks. So that's standard operating procedure for the rink.
I also wanna speak too, just going, because I'm thinking facilities wise. Ventilation wise, our high school gym has Mert13 filters. And I, I feel like the interest, like, wait, wait, there is this one that I am. And also today, we talked about our middle school gym does not have Mert13 filters, but they have the HEPA units. So they're gonna be able to have the cleaning air as well. So when we're doing these events and stuff, we're making sure that our filtration and ventilation system is up to par as well.
And what do you think's gonna happen now with outsiders asking to come in?
So we're gonna have that conversation at the facilities meeting tomorrow to discuss it. Um, you know, I do think there's some possibilities that we can look at being able to have our school community being utilized again, but it has to be very stringent, you know, to the way that we're doing it, to these things. But if we can do it and we can do it well, we owe it to our community to see what we can do. So we're gonna have that conversation tomorrow at the facility.
And that's a good reminder to the community that board, um, board chairs give a quick summary of these meetings, but you're always welcome to see the detail if that's something that interests you. But because facilities meeting will be streamlined.
In closing, I'm requesting approval. Participating highly is coming out, but I was, and I alluded to it earlier. I just, I just genuinely believe that in the absence of inter-scholastic athletics, um, they're finding other ways to participate in their sports. And I, and I think that as, as a school district with, you know, layers of supervision and guidance from our league section in this, well, you know, I think we could do, I think we could do a, a good job of supervising it.
And that will be the resolution later in our, in our agenda.
Before, Joe, please, can I say one thing? I just wanted to acknowledge Joe Settienza and his hard work. Joe, not only with the athletic department putting all this together, but also as a COVID coordinator, has been instrumental in making sure that our district can stay open. So, you know, hats off to Joe and all your hard work.
It, it's funny, he took, he just took some credit right there.
Sorry, Joe.
I also want to thank you for that work in COVID, but for all the years, I mean, our kids, our, two of our kids graduated together. Um, but for being the thoughtful, caring advocate that you are, not just for the athletes, but for all children in general.
Bless you, Joe. You've got, you've taken on one hell of a-
I wasn't really given an option.
No, you aren't. Sorry, Joe.
Sorry, sorry, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, Jenny and Joe. Okay, next will be, um, we have, we have, um, our budget presentation by, um, I think Jim.
Yep, and Jim is right here. He's gonna be screaming and presenting.
Hi, Jim.
I also printed, don't worry, I did just handstand this up before I gave it to him.
Good evening, everyone. Hello, Joe.
Hi, Jim.
All right, so Jim and I are gonna kinda set the tone and stage for where we're gonna be going with our budget this year. This is the draft and beginning of where we are. Um, so we're gonna give you a little bit of an overview and then kinda start walking everyone through the process as we're going through development. So, and since Jim is brand new, I just wanna talk more than me.
Okay, so the first thing we're gonna start with is a review of the significant factors of revenue. Um, as you know, state aid makes up a small portion of our revenue, currently under twenty percent with the executive budgets. The tax levy makes up over seventy percent. Other revenue is very small. And this year, federal revenue, the COVID relief aid that was passed in the end of December is one point one three million dollars. Based on our projection of what the expenses would be with using a rollover and adding items that we'll mention later, there's a gap of one point three seven million dollars that assumes no increase in taxes, that assumes no out of the fund balance. So those are items that we'll talk about a little later. So the governor's budget that he presented in, on January nineteenth has a significantly lower number than in prior years. Um, in part, that's because one project fell off of the building aid, which was from two thousand and one. And in part because it was offset by federal COVID aid, so they had to take it out of there. And please ask any questions as we go along. I'm happy to answer them. The next item is the tax levy. We know it's not two percent. Um, it is a string of calculations that starts with two percent. And in this case, this year, it's one point two three percent is the CPI that has been, um, calculated for this past year. We know that the maximum is two percent that they will allow, no matter what the actual CPI is. And that difference of point seven seven percent from two to one point two three reduces our potential taxing capacity by almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we all know CPU does not match up with what our actual expenses are. So doing the tax levy calculation, uh, which Robin and I have looked at, um, we start with last year's tax levy. We add the growth factor, which is new and expanded properties. We take away the capital levy exclusion from last year and apply that one point two three percent, um, CPI. That would allow us an increase of a little over five hundred thousand dollars, two point seven two percent. So this is, um, the two point seven two is what I'm gonna recommend that we would go out at. Um, that would help cut down that one point three million dollar gift that Jim was talking about in the beginning. You'll see now how we start to kinda filter that away, chip away at that gap as we move forward. Um, but that two point seven two is what we would do. We also have one of the highest growth factors again in the region. Would help offset that tax burden on a lot of our community members, but it is, that all kind of goes together.
Jim, in the second bullet point, it says one point zero one two three, is that the CPI factor?
It's one hundred and one percent, one hundred and one point twenty three percent written out in decimals, yes.
Okay. And that's different than the one point two three percent that's in the restricted tax cap in the fourth slide?
No, that is the one point two three percent just represented as added to the base. One plus the-
God, okay. So it's like a hundred and one point.
Yep.
Thank you. That makes so much more sense now. I really-
School relief, which began as a very simple program to take thirty thousand dollars off of your basic, um, value, um, has evolved constantly. One of those evolutions in April two thousand and fifteen, they put a cap on income for basic star, made a mandatory change for all new home purchases to the income tax credit rather than the deduct on the bill, and gave an opportunity for current people who had the deduct to move to the, um, tax credit. They also capped the annual increase at two percent for the deduct, not the tax credit. They changed it a couple of years later and capped it at zero. So star cannot increase ever again for the deduct amount, which drives the star aid. So because new home sales are going onto the income tax credit, the amount of star has gone down every year since, since it can't increase at all. The, the governor proposed a change this year that he would reduce star up to the amount of the federal aid to offset, um, a gap in the state's budget. Now, that's made clear in the documents that this is a long-term strategy. They want to get rid of star, it looks like. There's a way to reduce the size of our star aid and help our taxpayers. If we ask them to switch from the deduct to the tax credit, the amount of our tax levy collection goes up, they get a check to offset, star aid payment goes down. This minimizes the future impact of that star reduction. It helps the taxpayers since there's no cap on the increase for the tax credit at this point. Their amount will increase, the fact that they get as taxes increase, unlike the deduct. So we know that that won't have any impact this year if all of the governor's changes are accepted because he took a portion from star and a portion from the quote-unquote shared services aid, which we'll go through a little later. Um, it's basically a whole bunch of different aids with different aid ratios and they're trying to disconnect them from that. The legislature has rejected past attempts to do this.
So real quick about the star tax relief. Next year, when that's gone, we're gonna see an impact from it. So what Jim and I are trying to talk about now, we would like to push more, is people looking at, instead of doing the deduct, they switch it over, it will benefit the district and it will also benefit them. Um, if not, you're going to see the taxpayers themselves, they'll lose out on the opportunity and as will the district. So it's a win-win as if people start switching over and we wanna be able to help educate people regarding that. Jim, am I correct in what I just said? Cause you're more of the business guy than I am?
Actually, the impact, the problem is the taxpayers won't see the impact because they'll still get the deduct if they don't switch. But it is limited where the tax credit is not, there's no cap on the tax credit. The district would suffer for it because we wouldn't be reimbursed for that deduct.
How do you go about educating school, community, population to make a switch in the way they file their income taxes or property taxes?
It's step one right now. It's, I, first we have to talk about it and bring it to the table. Cause before Jim, I gotta be honest with you, before Jim even said, we were at a meeting, we go, whoa, this isn't gonna be good. And Jim goes, well, I have an idea and we talked about it. I, he had educated me. And now that I was educated, it's now time to do what educators do and we need now to do that more. So as part of this, and as part of what we're doing, when we talk about this, all of our communication going out, we're gonna clearly, you know, talk to people about this and it's not gonna be overnight. You know, I think it's gonna take time for people to understand it. But if we talk about it in the sense that people can see a change to their bottom line, I know if you tell me that I'm gonna be able to see more money back in my pocket as a homeowner, that, that speaks volumes to me.
You're gonna need a real strong pepper on this.
It's not a natural to expect the school district to give you tax advice.
You're correct.
Uh, wha- what does the actual process look like, Frank, to, for somebody to make the change?
I actually did the process and it's fairly simple. What you need, uh, is your tax return that you most recently filed with New York State. And that has all the information you need. It takes about five minutes when you have that to switch it over from the deduct to the tax credit.
But, but so where does somebody go to do that? Is it, is it a website online? Is it, they have to file something with the school district? Is it?
It's the tax department website and I have a link for that so that people can go there.
And we know somebody who could help us with, like, giving the information out.
I'm kinda on the credit, I will tell you. Um, it takes, you know, less than five minutes to complete the application form and submit it.
Does this affect all school districts?
Yes.
Yes. So this could be a statewide campaign to get people to switch over.
Yep.
Yep. And, and, you know, you can see from what's happening that the governor is trying to push people towards the credit.
Yeah.
There are budget implications on the state side and that's why they're pushing, you know, and, and through eligibility determinations, making more and more people, you know, sort of forced to, to move to the credit. Um, and, and that's gonna keep happening, I think.
Interesting.
We just thought it would be important to shed a little light on it as we do this process. Thanks, Jim.
Yep. Other revenue is very minimal, one point five percent, as we showed earlier. Um, with the interest earnings down so much, um, it is very difficult to increase in that area. And I would probably be overstating it if I did, so I haven't touched that at this point. Federal revenue is Medicaid, which is budgeted at about forty thousand dollars, and the new COVID relief aid. It is a one-time payment, um, of the three point eight billion dollar amount that we received from the end of December, uh, bill. So, uh, if there are any questions about revenue, we can talk about that now. I think that'd be better to do now if you have any more questions. Okay?
Yeah.
Gonna move on to, uh, the expense factors. So we start with the rollover budget and then we adjust certain areas and we'll go through those individually. The services and items that we've included in addition to the rollover budget are the demographic survey, upgrading the telephone system. You can read them all. I don't need to read them for you. Uh, a number of items.
Yeah, and a lot of these things, um-
Yes, and a lot of these things, some of these, we don't have to do. We're putting in kind of a wish list item, after talking to the principals, looking at our district need, looking at the stuff we have. The upgrading of the telephone system, that's something that, if we have the funds to do now, because our, our current system is no longer updated and actually supported. So in order for us to have working phones, that is something we will have to do. But we've been able to shop that out at a very, like, I think it's twelve thousand dollars, to be able to do the, instead of buying brand-new phones, we've been able to do it, still have functioning phone system, but keeping it down at a level. But a lot of these things are all at a point where, if they have to be taken out, these are things that we can take out as we go, they're just wish lists things added on as well. So Chromebook for each school, we always want that, but if there comes a time where we can't get those, we understand and we keep moving forward.
So I may be getting ahead of a more detailed budget presentation, but one of the documents attached to the meeting materials was proposed budget for next year. And the BOSI's services number looks like it jumps substantially.
That was also because we have the CTS program. So we had our technology director, who was in-house district, that switched over to a BOSI's program. So we've been picking things and pushing them to a BOSI's line. So we're going to see that aid coming back this year, but that's why you did see some of the jumps that are in it. No, you're right, we saw the same thing as we were looking at it. In the staffing area, we're looking at adding potentially an operations and maintenance supervisor, teaching assistant at the elementary schools, special education teacher at the high school, and point four Spanish at the high school. Employee benefits, ERS is averaging out at fifteen point two percent for the upcoming year. The maximum teachers' retirement system contribution is projected to be ten. We just received the news that it's actually going to be nine point eight, so that's a slight adjustment. Work and compensation is projecting an increase of about five percent. Health insurance and prescription are projected to be flat, with Blue Shield down one percent, CDPHB up three and a half, three point two five, and our prescriptions trending lower by about five percent. Debt service, we did pay off the last part of the two thousand one project bonds. So that payment goes away of eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars, as you can see below. We've included a placeholder of two hundred thousand to pay off some principal on the borrowing that we've made for the current project. That is one of those items that may be adjusted as we go along. So the summary being that the projected expenses are twenty-six point seven million, revenues are twenty-five point three. And again, those assume no change in tax levy, and the cap increase is five, five hundred and ten thousand. Reduced state aid, one-time federal aid, and no use of fund balances or reserves. So the projected gap is one point three seven million. If we tax at the cap and include the three hundred thousand in allocated fund balance, that's the usual amount, the gap is currently five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which is about two percent of the entire budget. This is not an unusual place to be at this point in the year, before everything has been finalized. This gap will be addressed with any new state aid, potential use of reserves, potential reductions of the increases to the rollover budget that we noted before. Any, any questions so far on that, I know what Jim just was talking about?
That makes sense. I just, I feel like it's a big change, though, for us to be talking about it like this and understand that there's a gap. Whereas I feel like a couple of years ago, it was like, this is devastating, this is crisis mode. The gap was, I mean, I know that we had the whole prescription issue that we're still kind of working on, but the fact.
Yeah, I mean, I think, just, just having been there at the time, Rachel, that, that's something that really came out of nowhere in between budget presentations, right? Like, we had begun the budget process in one position, and then found ourselves in a radically different position, literally weeks later.
I wasn't even talking about that so much, though, it's just.
Oh, okay.
The existence of a gap is being expressed as something normal, and that's something that will be worked on over the next, you know, and then there is the production timeline. And just the understanding of, this is where we are, we will get here, here's what we have on our, I'm going to say wishlist, but, I'm just going to use our wishlist, and here's where our income possibilities are. So just saying, this is really a very small fraction, ironically, of the budget. It's, it's just a different way of looking at things, and I appreciate it. Thank you for expressing it that way.
Now, if we did have, again, our prescriptions and our, and our reserves on that are doing very well, and we're in a good place, if you added something like that again, you wouldn't see a five hundred and sixty thousand dollar deficit. And if I, and if we had a one point one million dollar deficit with all that stuff, I'd be going, hold on, you know, you know, when I bring you a budget next time, it's not going to look like this. There's going to be different differences. We're at a point right now that we can look at what we're doing in our practices and see how we can maximize everything that we're doing in-house and trying to be able to look ahead in the future. So I understand exactly what it is. That's why we tried to do it in this way, so you can see, yep, there's a gap, there always is a gap at this point when you, when you do a budget. The governor's proposal always leaves you with a gap, but it allows us to get us down to a point where it's manageable and we have an understanding of it.
Yeah.
Any other questions before Jim moves on?
I, I appreciate how well put together it is as well, Jim, thank you.
Yes, Jim, it is unbelievable to think you've only been here how long?
All right, you're good to go on, Jim. Okay, so the timeline, we know the governor's proposed. They will talk about the budget and try to develop it by April one for a hopefully on-time budget. We have to file our tax levy limit by March first. We believe we will file at the two point seven two percent number. Filing deadline for Board of Education candidates, propositions, things like that. Last day for you to adopt is actually April twenty-sixth, that's the last day the state will accept the information. We hold our budget hearing sometime between the fourth and the eleventh, as required, fourteen to seven days before, and the vote is on May eighteenth. Yeah, we are still trying to figure out, we were told by Alden County, we do not have voting machines this year. So we, we're still trying to figure this out of, how this is going to work. We're looking at seeing if we can purchase, borrow, you know, voting machines, if it would be a paid buzz. So there's a lot of uncertainty out there with the vote's going to look like, that's a work in progress as well.
How many do you usually have? Is it just one?
Has there been any conversation about mail-in voting?
Uh, yeah, but we'd rather not do that at the moment, like.
I know, but I don't know what you're hearing out there.
Yeah, no, honestly, there hasn't been a ton of that, it's been a little bit of chatter. We need one, Rob. We are.
Okay, that's my thought.
To do it. So, you know, there were, Jim and I are looking at ways of being able to, um, change our copiers over to using it as a scanner, we're looking at those options, we're looking at purchasing a ballot scanner, we're looking, looking at a coaster through BOSI, so that if we purchase it, we get revenue, you know, money back on that. Um, there's a whole bunch of different options out there, we just need to find the best one that's going to fit our need and, and cheapest, to be honest with you, um, to be able to have this work.
Great.
Still a work in progress.
Yes, thank you both, very informative. Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, Frank, you have a superintendent report?
Yeah. I feel like I've been talking a lot.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm going to be short of sleep tonight. I mean, the one point I just wanted to make is that we're doing our surveillance testing. You know, we're roughly getting about twenty percent of our student population, staff population, a month at this point in time, and we had zero. So we're, you know, we're very pleased in the fact that, you know, as we're doing ten to sixteen students and staff per day, we're getting zero positives of our students.
With the rapid test?
Yes, with rapid test.
That's almost, that's not a question.
What's that?
Don't say occasionally a false negative.
We've had zero.
False positive?
Yep. Occasionally, but, yep.
How long have I left at testing the battery?
So I have to actually give some back. I'm going to work with the Department of Health to give them back, because when it first happens, the SAG-EE was over a thousand, about a thousand tests. We will not need a thousand, and they expire in April. So I have to make sure that I at least give, you know, we're going to give about four hundred back, and then we think we'll be able to use for a major of those.
So what happens in April, and all of, we don't have any more tests?
That's up to discussion at this point, we're still waiting to hear what's going to happen. Yes, well, or they still might be provided back, because we really don't exactly know what's going to happen.
Well, I'll be vaccinated by then.
I am, I'm completely, yeah, then I both have to.
That's one.
That really is.
One editor.
Yeah, we shared almost everything else, I just, that was, that was the only thing I wanted to share tonight.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so moving on, opportunity for the public to be heard. We had no public comments this month. And again, we will continue to monitor what the situation is and how we hold each month board meeting on a monthly basis. Okay, so approval of minutes, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting from last month?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll move it, oop.
All in favor? A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, good. Okay, so now, action items. Let's take five point one through five point five, that's the graduate reports, personnel items. And then, of course, we have personnel items, there is Mark the Kent, twenty years, that's school psychologist. We're looking forward to celebrating that in November. Five point three, CSC recommendations, five point four, substitute teacher appointment, five point five, declaration of surfer, and stop there. Can I have a motion to approve those items together?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
Any comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
All right, so, um, next, let's take five point six by itself, and let's approve resolution. To approve the resolution for high-risk sports. Any comments? If not, can I have a motion?
I would like to comment that I would say that I've been extremely impressed with the planning and coordination that's gone into this, and, you know, Joe, Frank have done an amazing job. I mean, everything we ask about has been taken into consideration. And I love the fact that we're trying to do something for these kids, we're not giving up on them. It's a lot of work. You asked the question of, you know, is it worth it? And it's a lot of work, and it, you might play four games, but it does send a message, I think, to the school community and to these students in particular, that, you know, we really value your educational opportunities, we want to do what we can to, to help you out.
Thank you for saying that. I was just thinking, like, let's give a, take a moment to just appreciate how much, but it's just, how many times it's just been dropped like, like a ball thrown into the center, go! You know, just take care of this.
And, and if, if, even if we can get a senior game, a senior recognition, uh, man, that, that's just okay for kids before they have something positive before they leave with the hundred percent graduation.
But with my comment, I would move it.
Yes, well, we, I didn't ask.
Oh, okay.
No, so, um, we're, just so everybody's clear, we're approving all of the sports that, um, Joe brought up.
Do we have to do them one at a time?
No, so they're, they're being grouped, though, into one resolution.
Yes, but I think when time comes for indoor track, cross-country.
That's moderate.
Oh, that's moderate.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's moderate. This is, yeah.
Yeah, I would, yeah, that was one thing that I, I just failed to mention the other day. That is moderate, so that's only high-risk sports is the ones that we're.
Just the ones, but they're all grouped together, so when we do vote, we're approving or not approving, all, all or nothing, okay? Unless somebody has a comment, they want to pull one out, speak now. Otherwise, may I have a motion to move?
Don't move.
Great, thank you, Tim.
I'll second it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, move on and.
Can I just have one quick question? Is there any implication we're not thinking about that we're not wanting to do? Or not, really? I mean, they'll just come here.
They're just going to come here, yeah, yeah.
We're not missing anything.
If you are, that means we are.
Okay.
And if we are, I will be very honest with you, we'll fix it. I mean, I, I, I will tell you flat out through this, this plan, there's things that we missed, and two days later, we didn't miss them again. So, you know, so if it does happen, we'll fix it.
Thank you. Okay, so move. Okay, so now we have five point seven and five point eight. Can I have a motion to move these?
Move it.
Second?
I'll second, and can I just clarify, because I was asking you a little bit, with Frank on this, this is limited to the sick leave buyout.
That's all it is, yeah.
And that's it.
That's it, yeah. So Article one is only for the buyout for sick leave. So if someone were to pass away due to COVID, they get, you know, depending on their contract, it's a thousand dollars for the sick days. They get that one-time buyout for a thousand dollars for that, to the estate of the family or to the family, and then it's done. So it doesn't apply to TRS, ERS, nothing else after that, only that one portion.
I second.
Okay.
Can I have a quick question, though, on the five, with the section number five?
The FSCRA, with.
It says employees experiencing new or worse than COVID symptoms, blah, blah, blah. So number one, it says the employee schedules a COVID-naking test. That, if the word schedule seems very ambiguous, you mean?
So.
What does that mean?
So, so let you, this has been something that the union denied, and the lawyers have been working on for a while. It means that the day that they have symptoms, they're going to contact a physician and/or a testing place, and they're going to schedule a test that day. It doesn't mean that they're all, it doesn't mean they're going to get a test that day, it just means that they're going to schedule a test for Tuesday, or, because we know sometimes it's three days out.
Right.
But it just means that they have to show a due process that they're, you know, if they have symptoms, boom, they're going to schedule a test that day. And then, you know, if it's three days later, we understand that, I mean, it's very difficult times, but it shows that they're showing their due process and due diligence again.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Excellent. Okay, so.
Any other questions, Greg?
I had asked a question before about what are the financial risks here for the one, the clauses, uh, twenty-two point, is it twenty, I don't know which one.
The twenty-two point three and then one point seven.
Yeah, and I asked a question, Frank answered my question. I, I feel satisfied that we're not taking on a huge financial gamble here. Hopefully, no gamble, so hopefully nothing, nobody ever passes away due to COVID in this school district. But it is something that kind of caught my eye, and I heard, from what I heard, that the reference back to the contract language made it clear that this is not a huge risk that we're undertaking.
Good, so all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So old basement, and again, I think when we were speaking about the facilities committee, again, is this a big time to remind people that we're just giving a quick overview, but the community's totally welcome to watch any of these committee member meetings live, where the details of policies, etc., facilities tomorrow, the details of what we brought up tonight will be discussed with the committee.
And the recorder, too.
And the recorder, too, so. So, you know, our pur, so our purpose is to bring a summary to the rest of us, but I think that's part of the reason that we decided as a board to keep that, to record them and to screen them, so that anybody who wants the details is welcome to attend and to, to deal with and discuss. So thank you. And so audit committee, we did not meet this evening, the next meeting is six o'clock next March eighth, right?
Correct, and as a reminder, board members, if you have any comments on the audit committee charters, just feel free to send those to me by email. I have receipts from some of you.
Yeah, sorry, it's like, we just started reading, it's like, okay, well, I guess we have to change this, okay. Let's see, what's that? Okay, curriculum, that would be Tim's chair.
We met on January twenty-sixth, and the first item we talked about is the fact that the State Education Department submitted a waiver request to the federal government seeking that the state assessments that are used for three through eight, and I think it expanded out into the region's exams as well, that they be canceled for the upcoming spring, because it's been such an odd year, and it's very difficult to measure performance and accountability, given all the conditions that we've been facing. And we didn't. And, uh, we didn't, we didn't talk about it at length. It was just acknowledged that there's a survey and a comment period and any one of us is welcome to submit something, uh, fill out that survey or submit comments. Uh, I don't, we didn't as a committee agree to do that or anything of that nature. We just, it was a acknowledgement that that tool exists. Uh, we got an update on progression partners, which is doing, um, some training, uh, among our staff for equity, diversity and inclusivity, a better understanding of how that works, and that's gotten underway. And we've got a little bit of an update there as to how that's going. Uh, and then we talked a little bit about our goals for the future and the past. And, um, uh, we're hoping to kinda get a better sense of what our ex, the expectations are of the committee. Uh, we have some further conversations to have around that. Um, but one of the things we did agree on is having meetings every other month rather than monthly. Uh, because we think that the, the work that is assigned to us is probably, uh, more better attended to in a bi-monthly fashion. Um, and in the future, we've talked about the idea of doing some, having some conversations about class size, about curriculum needs, about course listings and about attendance.
Thank you, Tim. And with, what, so you, the next meeting date then will be?
It'll be in March, yeah.
But we left it open to have it on a monthly basis as needed, right?
Yeah, I think.
My understanding was that we can still have it every month, but if we don't need to have a meeting, we don't need to take up the time of the members of the district.
Yeah, actually, the original proposal was maybe going quarterly and, uh, and our charge would allow for that. But, uh, agreement was that a bi-monthly schedule would be our first starting point and maintain a level of flexibility a, a, as needed.
Okay, good. Sounds good. Thank you, Tim. Okay, and then facilities is meeting tomorrow, so we'll hear from Rob next month?
We, we did actually meet on, do we have, have we had a meeting since January 19th? I don't think we have, right?
You're meeting tomorrow, right?
No, we are, but we also, we, we met on January 19th as well. I don't think we've read that one out. Um, am I right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, okay. So, and if, if people have heard this before, they'll hear it again. Um, so we, uh, we, we met on January 19th. We talked about, uh, a whole, whole bunch in the beginning of the meeting about technology hardware. Um, we really needed a server overhaul. We were, uh, kinda running on fumes from a, a server perspective and had, uh, you know, had, had one die, right Frank? Beginning of the year or sometime around there, yeah.
In the summer.
And, yeah, back in the summer. So n- now that we're working with NAREC, it makes the process of fixing that kinda thing much easier. Um, so we started the process for an installment purchase program for servers, storage and some student devices, um, now that have already been sent out to the vendor. It includes 140 Chromebooks, um, some NASA or, you know, network-connected storage, um, and, uh, some remote off-site backup storage as well. Um, hoping to set that up sometime over February break. Um, next year, we're gonna plan on buying additional Chromebooks plus new wired and wireless infrastructure. Um, you know, I, I think we had talked about, it's not in the minutes, I think we talked about trying to get, you know, parity with, uh, you know, the, the middle school, high school campus and the elementary school campus as far as, you know, wireless infrastructure. 'Cause right now it's on two totally different sets of hardware, different, you know, management of that stuff and it's a whole different experience, uh, floating between those two campuses. Um, and, uh, you know, we're hoping to use some E-E rate funds plus NAREC to maximize some savings for some of that stuff. Um, and we're, we're starting to target, um, continued improvement of our technology in, in the district. Um, you know, we're also looking to improve our tech room and science rooms as part of Phase 2 of the capital project, um, which will include the additional purchase of, uh, 30, uh, you know, computers for those rooms and, uh, installation of some premium boards. Um, we then also talked about security upgrades and smart schools. So the new alarm system is slated for, um, you know, installation is, is part of a outstanding smart schools application that's being installed this month. Is that installed yet, Frank? Is that scheduled?
Um, I just wanna give a quick update. That's supposed to be done over February break.
Okay, great.
The servers, actually, we're switching them out on Wednesday over February break, so.
Nice.
Figures crossed, that goes well. And, uh, so all new servers come February, um, come February break and we also have the 140 Chromebooks that came in as well. So we are betting a thousand on those things.
Awesome. Um, so then there was another smart schools application that was for more secure, secure entryways at the middle school and high school. This will be a much, uh, larger, more expensive and, and longer-term, uh, you know, project. Um, and, uh, I think it says at the elementary school, which we're a little part of the capital project. So to do a secure entryway at the elementary school, you know, I think a lot of you know there's a secure vestibule, which I think is this now, I, I believe pushed off into a Phase 3 capital project, right? Even though there are originally only two phases, um.
Well, it would just be a new capital project. It does it. It'd just be.
No, I'm referring, I, I'm, yep. No, sorry, Frank, I was referring to the, there, there's a secure entryway thing which would need another capital project, but there is also the, uh, new entrance, right, down by the, you know, the ramp area by facilities that was supposed to be Phase 2 and I believe it's like a Phase 3 for this capital project. Is that correct?
Yeah, no.
It involves a new facade.
That was going to be a, um, an add-on for the ramp. There was, we didn't have the ability to be put an office down there 'cause the transportation office is still there. So that was taken out prior to me getting here. Um, but that's, the, only the ramp.
Okay, I didn't realize we took, we took out the facade piece, so.
Yeah, that was, that was just an add-on. And if we're gonna be able to do a capital project in five years from now, that's when you wanna be able to do ramps and maybe switch it out.
Yeah, for the entryway and the, yep. All right, um, on to, uh, we also discussed athletic facilities, um, maybe making some improvements in the next budget, including infrastructure upgrades and field maintenance and narration and, uh, installing the scoreboard, which we already have over at the satellite field. Um, we also talked about trimming the trees around the tennis courts, um, to improve the condition of the courts themselves over time, um, and, and buy new nets. Uh, the tennis courts may need some resurfacing in the future, but that, uh, I, I think is pretty expensive and that's capital project stuff too, right Frank?
Yeah, it's about $50,000 to resurface it.
Yeah, big, big, big chunk of change.
We did a quote. It's just a check.
A lot of car washes.
Yep.
So, uh, it's a lot of car washes, yep. Um, we also talked about C, CO2 testing and, uh, you know, we've gotten the results of the air sampling testing that was performed on January 13th. Everything was well within the safe air quality guidelines, um, relative humidity levels are low, uh, but we would have to purchase a whole bunch of humidifiers to change that. Um, we're gonna keep testing and, and monitoring, um, longer term, um, as we go throughout the year, make sure that we're, we, we stay good. Um, we had an update on that, uh, small amount of mercury that was discovered in, uh, one of the science closets, I think. Um, which was, you know, see, seeing the pictures of this stuff, it was absolutely mind-blowing to me that, uh, you know, that it was noticed. Um, that was a good eye right there, little tiny dot next to a penny for scale. Um, fortunately, it was contained in just a small, uh, amount of, of mercury and it was, was sort of an odd issue, but, you know, we had clear harbors come in and, uh, clean and treat the areas if it was contaminated. Um, and, uh, you know, ensure that everything is within the OSHA recommendations. Um, we had a radon update as well. Um, some radon levels were at the high school were measured slightly high. We're gonna retest those rooms and bring in additional mitigation fans, um, if needed. Uh, Phase 2 capital project, uh, update bids, um, were awarded, right? We already did that at the BOE meeting. And, uh, you know, we had a bunch of bids for each piece, which, which means you get better prices and better prices is, is awesome. Um, we wrapped it up talking about the, uh, you know, ever-present, uh, topic of the transportation facility. Um, and, uh, you know, looked at plans that had been run previously for, uh, a facility that could have gone, and this was, you know, way back, uh, during the first discussions of the capital project that we're in the midst of. You know, one of the options was building a transportation facility, um, over at the satellite field. So, you know, we reviewed some of that stuff, um, and, uh, you know, just kinda reiterated that, you know, i- i- if we do move the transportation facility from the elementary, elementary school, which is certainly one of our longer-term goals, you know, we need to figure out how best to use that current space and, you know, what should be done, um, et cetera. So, and, and we'll keep turning through that stuff as part of our longer-term planning. And that's all I got. I guess that was a lot.
Wow. Was that like a two-hour meeting with all those?
Uh, that one was only a one-hour meeting. We, we've gotten more efficient over time, so I think it was 54 hours.
That's a lot of standard, um, thank you, Rob.
Yeah, it was, yep. All right.
Rachel, policy?
Uh, we had a policy meeting. We, it was very brief and we discussed policy 6650 and James suffered, uh, groin death for that. Uh, it basically covered the way we handle, um, that, that there's an internal, uh, [inaudible]. Transgender, thank you. And the, the language used on how we appoint that person or how, how that person's qualifications are determined. So we have done that and then we looked at the fact that 0000 is something that we needed to discuss with the board. So with, after today's meeting, we, um, I think I pointed in Northwest, you can sell here. Um, the four of us will go back to the drawing board and do what we did with policy 0105, um, and develop something that, uh, can work or start building something that can possibly work as part of a longer-term process that will encompass the whole board and be part of our strategic plan as well. Um, so our next meeting, if anyone cares to join, um, by watching, is March 3rd, I believe. Um, so, I, I think so. I think that's March 3rd. So, um, that's policy.
Yes, thank you, Rachel. Okay, so let's see, new business, 7.1. Can we move, take together 7.1 acceptance of donations and we had already discussed, [inaudible], um, but we need to accept the donation. And 7.2, the revisions to support the education policy that Rachel just mentioned. Can we have a motion?
I can move.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, excellent. Okay, all right, so opportunity for board to be heard. We were heard a lot tonight. Any additional comments?
I just, something that I was thinking of for the good of the viewer, but is that there's now a, a movement in February, um, which as you pointed out, the board is now spreading smiles and just, there's been so many actions in the community to help spread smiles, but kind of typically a colder and grayer time of year. And so, um, thanks to Trish for mentioning that, that, thanks to the VCSF for this movement of just sharing any bit of joy that we can find because it's there. I think one of the silver linings has been just our ability to find joy in moments that we might have just been bored.
Thank you for bringing that up. Good point. Any others? Okay, so dates to remember, March 8th is the next board meeting and we will start at 6 o'clock with, um, audit committee. And again, like we do every month, we'll see what the, what the situation is in the Green Day and, and how we, how we have our meetings, how, whether they're going to do it at that time. Okay? Okay, so thank you everyone and have a wonderful, you think?
My turn.
The motion to adjourn?
Oh, I'll, I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, city warm. We're dead warm.